After day, the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriation Housing is now called to order. Today is Monday, December 13, 2021. The time now is 6:02. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience and for accommodating the Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Notice for this public hearing, we disseminate the email to all centers and all main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, November 24, 2021, and Thursday, November 2nd, December 2nd, 2021, and again on Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. The agenda tonight, we have three nominees for three different boards. But we're going to begin today with the confirmation hearing of Marilyn Bora to serve as a member of the Guam Ethics Commission for four years, from May 17, 2021 to May 16, 2025. The rules of conduct, this Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff and will mute all Zoom participants until called upon. Members of the committee and noncommittee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Individual testifying shall first be recognized by myself before speaking and begin by stating their name for record keeping purposes. When called to speak, please make sure that you are unmuted. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any bodies of this general rule of conduct will result in a move from the virtual public hearing. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in any activity during the hearing. But if you want to get a drink and snack at the same time, there's not a problem. It's six o'clock. It's dinner time. Failure to maintain visibility may cause your move from the meeting livestream. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me today. We have Senator Telo Titigui. And I think that's about it. So that's great. And we will now begin with, I'd like to acknowledge Marilyn Bora. If you can go ahead and give your testimony tonight on your point. All right, Marilyn?
Thank you so much, Senator. Thank you, Honorable Joe San Augustine, Chairman of the Committee on Government Operations Appropriations and Housing. Members of the committee, all honorable senators and stakeholders for taking the time to hear my testimony and for your consideration of my extended service of four more years to the Guam Ethics Commission. At the start of the newly resurrected Guam Ethics Commission in 2019, I was elected to serve as vice chair alongside Chair Shannon Murphy and the entire commission, went straight to work on building the framework to build the long-awaited Ethics Commission. As you can imagine, there was much to be done. Working towards a goal without a budget, a team, or even a space to work in created its own challenges, but did not discourage us. Right when we felt we were making progress, next thing you know, we were all facing COVID-19 and the challenges this pandemic brought to us all. As you can see, being on this Zoom platform, my first confirmation hearing was in person. A little over two years later, I'm happy to report the following milestones, just a few actually, of the following milestones and accomplishments the commission has achieved. In 2020, we received our first legislative appropriation. We also successfully established the executive director position and initiated the search. In 2021, we hired the first executive director who's joining me on this call, Jesse Kinga. We hired two support staff. Two public laws were enacted, Public Law 36-25 and 36-28. We opened the Guam Ethics Commission office at the GCIC building. We conducted the first Ethics and Government Program Workshop, and we collected the first Ethics Training Compliance Report from all government of Guam entities. We also have many ongoing projects as well. As you can see, I'm extremely proud to have worked alongside passionate and driven individuals for the duration of my initial term, which was set initially for two years, although majority of this time was spent virtually. And here we are today, still virtual. It would be my pleasure and honor to be approved to serve for an additional term. In the height of this pandemic, the Ethics Commission has made phenomenal progress, and I want nothing more than to see the goals we set back in 2019 to come to fruition and to deliver the promise we made to the people of Guam to revive the Guam Ethics Commission and create a sustainable organization they can count on to set and regulate accountability for the government of Guam, which includes the commission itself. Chairman San Augustine, thank you, and the members of the committee for your consideration, and I humbly seek your support for my extension.
Thank you, Ms. Bora. Oh, you have my support. You guys are doing what you need, what you were tasked to do. And we have Mr. Kinga here. Jess, would you like to testify on support of Ms. Bora before I open the floor for anybody else?
Yes, thank you, Senators San Augustine, for the opportunity. I do express my strong support for the appointee, and I hope that the legislature will grant her confirmation to a second term. I will submit and had written a testimonial in support of this, and will provide that to the committee to include in the report. So I'll be around, and should there be any questions from yourself or any other senators?
All right, thank you, Mr. Kinga. I'd like those to recognize my colleagues that have also joined us, Senator Brown. Good evening. And I'll open out the floor now to my colleagues. If they have any questions for Ms. Bora. Senator Telo, do you have any questions for Ms. Bora?
I have no questions. I'm confident that she's going to do a good job, and I wish you the very best. And please, my door is always open if you need any assistance at all. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Good luck to you.
All right, and thank you, Senator Telo. Senator Brown, did you have any questions you might want to pose to the ethics nominee, Ms. Bora?
Sorry, I wasn't there for his statements, but I do want to ask, she may have related, but I do want to ask, in her service on the Ethics Board, what does she think makes her most qualified to serve in this capacity?
Oh, I can freely answer now, Senator. Okay. I think a different perspective was definitely the group that we have on the commission right now, I think comes from various walks of life and in my day job, I guess, if you will. And then also my personal life is just a wife and a mother. I think that, you know, bringing different perspectives, but it also adds to the synergies of the group, whether we come from corporate or just very experienced people that I look up to as well, different fields that we have. So as far as ethics, just overall, I think is a big part of me who I am, but also in the job that I also hold for my regular day job. I'm not to go into those details, but I run a unit at a local telecommunications company. So I think just ethics and overall accountability is a big part of my job. But what I look most forward to and I think what the value I do bring is just, I'm a local. I'm, you know, I'm a local, not just an island resident, but I'm, you know, lived here and born here all my life, and this is my home. So I think that as well, in addition to just my career, the various parts of my career, bringing that as well, I think is probably my best value that I can bring. And I think it's more though of an opportunity for me to be invested in something that I've not been, I've never been a government of Guam employee. Obviously, I have friends. I live in this community. So I think what was exciting for me was, as you can imagine, the stereotype that we hear so often in just our daily life about, you know, the government of Guam. And I feel like, you know, we deserve more than that, and I want to be part of that. And when my term came up, I felt like, wow, COVID robbed us of like a year and a half, and right when we're making this momentum, my term is up. So I'm happy to, you know, to continue the work, and Jesse being here, I think is a testament to it being brought to life.
I wanted to ask you a question because, you know, certainly in my experience, at least in the legislature, a lot of ethics complaints are very political in nature and sometimes very much intended to harm, you know, normally the elected official, some cases, and maybe valid number of other cases are not. But, you know, when your name is publicized, I mean, people know who you are. They might not know who Ms. Bora is, but I'm sure they know who, you know, Senator San Augustine, Senator Telo, and Senator Brown, probably a little more just because of our respective capacities. And sometimes, you know, there are people in our community that do bow down to political pressure. Sometimes there's an agenda there behind what may actually be a legitimate wrongdoing that someone has committed. By all means, if that's the case, then certainly people should be held responsible for that. But what is your view on that? Because it's not uncommon. I don't know, you know, certainly you're working in the private sector that has its own political dynamics. It's different, but it nevertheless exists. In government, you know, gosh, who gets hired, where they get hired, what favor happens here or there is not that uncommon. I'd like to think it's an exception, but after 33 years in the government, most of that time in the government of Guam, it's almost the standard. So I just wanted to ask you in terms of your own personal ethics, I mean, how would you address that if you were ever approached? Because there are different agendas out there. I mean, a lot of it has to do with power, a lot of it has to do with control, a lot of it has to do with money and who has access to it. So I just wanted to get your personal thoughts if you were approached to that, to try to influence your decision, whatever that decision may be on an issue or something that comes before you, a case that comes before you. How would you deal with that?
I think I would approach it the same way I do in my job, in my daily job, or even just here in my home. I think, or no, I don't think I know, I think the fact that I've not ever been politically involved, to my point earlier about not really working ever in the government or being involved even in any political, I've not been involved in any kind of, any political parties or fundraisers or anything like that. So I think that makes that part easy for me, because then I can just look at things straightforward for what they are. You know, it's black and white, and I think that part, again, thanks to my job and the work I've been doing for, gosh, however long I've been working, just makes it very easy to look at it like that and allow me a very unbiased, you know, perspective and view. And at the end of the day, it's what we feel is right, and it's all predicated on these, you know, policies, SOPs that we put in. And in a lot of ways, that makes it very easy to do my job, because if we implement, you know, policies and procedures for things, and that's exactly what our focus is on, I think it'll be clear for not just myself, but even the people that bring their complaints and that confidence they have. And I think that's what's been key for us is working towards establishing what are those process flows? And what can you expect? So I think it's about educating people who may have complaints or feel like there's, you know, monkey business going on. I think that's that and has been, and Jesse here is a big part of that in educating the people of Guam in, okay, what is the, again, the framework? And that's what we're working on. Our next step is education, because I think once those two things are out, then it makes all of our jobs so much easier to just be able to steer things towards the objective of a fair and complete process to a resolution on a complaint that's put forward. Me personally, I think what's made it easy again is, you know, I work in a service providing industry, and at the end of the day, we deliver what we say or what we commit and what we promise. So I think that helps that. So I don't foresee any problems, Senator, with biases or feeling pressures, if you will. And I think one of the public laws that went into place also even helped break even more barriers, or I'm sorry, not break barriers, but I think you get what I'm saying, where it makes it even easier to the autonomy of the, you know, or the separation of the Ethics Commission to where it's independent, you know, of any other pressures within the government system. So I hope I answered your question.
No, no, I really appreciate you responding to that question. I mean, that way we get a good sense, and the public does as well, of what to expect. Because certainly, you know, this is really probably the first time in the history of the government, even though the law has been in place for some time to actually have an Ethics Commission in place. And ultimately, we want to see the legitimacy of it, because the dynamics around you is not necessarily always that. It's very easy to attack and, you know, malign people. And nowadays, with social media and everything else, there's very little personal direct accountability. And I just wanted to get your insight on how you would respond to that, because it's not that uncommon. It's not that uncommon in our government, unfortunately, but I certainly appreciate your response to my questions and certainly your interests. I understand because of COVID, not really being able to serve a legitimate term. So appreciate your interest in coming back and wanting to continue to serve on the Ethics Commission. Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to be able to ask Ms. Bora some questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. And Ms. Bora, do you have anything you'd like to make a closing statement on your confirmation hearing?
No, just that I think I'm just humbled and honored to be seen and viewed as qualified to do this. Again, I'm just a simple born and raised here all my life, lived here, and I think I'm invested just as anyone else is here. And I'm very humble to think that I can bring value, and I certainly won't take that for granted or take my job lightly. So I'm committed to this, as you all are in your public service. So thank you very much for allowing me just a little time.
All right, and thank you, Ms. Bora. And I'm just to tease Jesse, I guess, once you guys move to the GCIC, I think you guys scared the Guam Ethics Commission out of there when they found out Ethics, Ethics Commission is in that building. But anyway, you all have a nice time, and there's no one else to testify or to speak on this confirmation hearing. And the committee will continue to receive testimony for the next few days for any additional testimony that may be submitted. And if you do want to, if anyone would like to submit a testimony, please submit it to the mayor of the Guam Legislature or through email at senatorjoessenawstein@gmail.com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending this virtual public hearing and for providing feedbacks and suggestions. The public hearing now is adjourned for Ms. Bora. The time now is 6:17. Thank you, Ms. Bora, Jesse. And this hearing is adjourned. Thank you. And then we will now proceed on to the next hearing, which is for, it is now 6:17. We will begin with the confirmation hearing for Nathaniel P. Sanchez. Is Nathaniel here? All right, where, then come on. Nathaniel, you got a video? There you go. Thank you, Nathaniel. Okay, let me begin with first calling the Committee on General Government Operations Appropriation Housing to order. Today is Monday, December 13, 2021. The time now is 6:18. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience and for accommodating the Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Notice this public hearing, we disseminate the email to all centers and all main media broadcasting outlets on Wednesday, November 24th, and Thursday, December 2nd, and Tuesday, December 7th. The agenda for this evening is the confirmation hearing of Nathaniel P. Sanchez, to serve as a member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board of Commissioners for five years, from March 31st, 2021 to March 30th, 2026. This Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff, and all Zoom participants are muted until called upon. Members of the committee and/or noncommittee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Individual testifying shall first be recognized by me before speaking and begin by stating their name for record keeping purposes. When called to speak, please make sure, please ensure that you are unmuted. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any bodies of this general rule of conduct will result in a move from the virtual public hearing. All right, please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in any other activity during the hearing. Failure to maintain visibility may cause your move from the meeting livestream. But if you're having a drink or having a snack, please feel free to. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me this evening, and I have Senator Telo Titigui, we have Senator Joanne Brown. And we have Mr. Nathaniel Sanchez here for the confirmation. We also have the Director of Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority, Mr. Ray Tapasta. I will now begin with Mr. Sanchez. Please state your name for the record and then begin your testimony. Just unmute yourself at this time, sir.
All right. Good evening. Thank you very much, Senator. And I appreciate that. And before we get started, my condolences to your father. Can you hear me? Is it coming in good? All right. And our joining accompanying senators, thank you, Ms. Titigui. Senator Brown, thank you for your attendance. And Director Tapasta Ray, thank you for joining us as well. Tonight, this would be my first appointment, at least with Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority. This will be my second appointment in my political career. I first served under Parks and Recs under the Camacho Muelen administration. This would be my second board appointmentship. And again, I want to thank the administration and Mr. Tapasta for considering me for this position. And hopefully, we will work well together and look forward to a prosperous, joyous union with our director and our membership to this board. Again, thank you, Senator, for this opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Is that it? Mr. Sanchez, Nathaniel?
Yes, Senator. That's, yeah.
No problem. And Mr. Tapasta, Director, would you like to speak, testify on Mr. Sanchez's podium, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you very much, Honorable Joe San Augustine, Chairman of this committee, and as well, Honorable Senators Titigui and Honorable Senator Brown. For the record, my name is Ray Sanchez Tapastia, no relation to Nathan. And I currently serve as Executive Director of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority. I am testifying tonight in full support of Nathaniel P. Sanchez to the Board of Commissioners for GURA. At the Housing Authority, we are always seeking diversification at the board level. And as such, Mr. Sanchez brings 20 years of financial planning experience to complement our diverse talents, to include a retired FBI Special Agent, a businesswoman, a retired educator, a certified HR professional, and by federal statute, a resident commissioner from our public housing program. Nate is the son of Chuck Sanchez and Virginia Cantrell, and currently serves as a president of United Financial Services, a company founded by his late mother. GURA is a high-performing God Guam agency with a FY22 operating and administrative budget of $98 million. As well, we just recently awarded $36.6 million worth of federal tax credits to build affordable homes, and we are working towards awarding even more sometime real soon. We are fully federally funded and highly regulated by our federal partners. As we all have witnessed in recent media reports, GURA must follow very strict federal guidelines. Not doing so will put us in harm's way. Hence, all appointees to the GURA board before being referred to this committee for confirmation undergo added layers of screening and vetting by the governor's office and as well by my team. For the record, GURA's board is a governing board and a governing board by federal statute. What that means is the buck never stops with me, but with the board. We are excited to have Nate Sanchez join this dynamic team of commissioners and contribute to our mission of strengthening families and building communities one project at a time. His financial planning background will serve to benefit us greatly as one of our core responsibilities is to keep our books clean. We humbly request of this body to confirm Mr. Sanchez to the GURA Board of Commissioners as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have our colleagues. Senator Telo, do you have any questions for Mr. Sanchez, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seduce, mercy, half a day, Nate. It's good to see you. Oh, you're on mute. Yeah, Nate, Nate, yeah, you're on mute.
After day, Senator. Good evening.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I was here for this. I didn't, okay, hold on one sec. I got a car going by. But congratulations. I had no idea you would be interested in being on this particular board. It's a very contentious board and gets a lot of media, as you may know. So, but I've known you. I know your work ethics. I know your drive, especially your drive. And I know that you're a very honest individual. So if you see something that's going awry or something that's not ethical, I'm sure you're going to say something, Nate, and I'm gonna, oh, I'm gonna trust that you are. As many years as I've known you, I've always, you've been forthright. So there are some issues that might happen over at GURA, and it's a very important agency. I mean, this agency houses many people, are those who are less fortunate, as well as our manampu. And a lot of federal funding comes through GURA. And I hope you get all those documents and, you know, really look into the federal side, how much money is being spent from GURA. So I know you have the, you know, the means to do it and the education institutional knowledge when it comes to this. So I'm really banking on it that you're going to do a great job. So what is, what is the one thing that you want to see happen at GURA? Or one thing that you want to look into at GURA while you're there?
That's a great question. Thank you, Senator, and I appreciate the sentiments. Thank you very much. I, you know, as a fiduciary and somebody who has a background in financing, or financial planning and finances, and being an anti-money laundering agent myself, you know, one of the focal points is, okay, we're now evolving into what you would, some may call post-pandemic, depending on where you're at. And how that contrasts, if you can contrast that against, you know, how our manampu and our families are, we can contrast that against, you know, what their livelihood has been like since this pandemic started and what that means to, you know, our agency facilitating the continuity of these people's lives instead of having them displaced and being victims of circumstances. You know, alongside all of that, you know, just having that minute accountability towards, you know, the federal funding, like you said, it's paramount. And with the history that GURA has had, you know, Mr. Tapasta has done, in my opinion, a pretty, pretty good job on rehabilitating the PR and getting things back to where they need to be. There, my job alongside other board members was simply to be, not to micromanage the director and the deputy director and all the other accompanying employees of GURA, but to work in concert so that we can facilitate this, this future for, again, like you said, our manampu and those who are clearly less fortunate. As a financial planner, you know, one of the things that I've been very fortunate to have been able to do for clients was to help people go from poor to middle to affluent, but working through the process. So one of my biggest goals, being a board member, would be to understand the process and what the agency has encountered in the past and how that has been negatively affected. It's generally speaking, always within the process. You know, if you, if we scrutinize the process, we can prevent and anticipate any unforeseen negative scenarios that can occur. So to answer your question, long short would be, I want to focus on the process. The process is so important, process with anything. If the process is, if there's, if there's a wrench somewhere in the processing itself, we're going to have issues. And that's my contribution towards this appointment would be to really investigate the process. Okay, this is how this is supposed to be. This is supposed to be like that. In theory, my job would to be anticipate all the scenarios that could potentially derail our plans of providing these homes to these less fortunate and victims of circumstances. So yes, and that would be my primary objective. Thank you very much, Senator. I appreciate that.
No, no problem. I thank you for stepping up to the plate, and I hope that in your capacity, you're an individual. You serve the people of Guam and the people of Guam, no one else. So, you know, I wish you the very best. And Nate, you know, you have my number. If there's anything I can do to assist you as you go down this path, and I hope that I can call upon you to, you know, get information as well. It's about a collaborative effort between, you know, between individuals. To make anything work, you know, you need that communication open. So my door is always open to you. I wish you the very best, and thank you for doing this again. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Senator Telo. Senator Brown, do you have any question for Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Certainly Senator Telo had the key question, but I also wanted to ask- Uh, but I, but I also wanted to ask Mr. Sanchez with his background, you know, how he feels he can contribute, because it always seems that we're always in a process as time goes by of having to go back and improve or correct, you know, sometimes the mismanagement of government agencies and government resources and, and hopefully try and get them on track. And once they're there, moving forward, have continuity with that. And sometimes, you know, that doesn't always work out. We, we always like to think we're building and moving forward, and, and it doesn't always happen in government. It's unfortunate, but in terms of your background and certainly being in the private sector, uh, and even what, what was your interest in wanting to serve on the Gura Board in particular? And what do you feel, you know, with the work that you do, you bring to the table that you can contribute or that you'd like to see, uh, with your contributions of, you know, to improve? Uh, I know you mentioned the process, but just the overall outcome and certainly how you as a board member and a member of the community uh, can contribute because of who you are and your background. I just want to get your insight in that.
That's a great question. Thank you, Senator. And, uh, you know, going back to what I was mentioning to Senator, excuse me, Senator Titigui, you know, one of the factors of being a financial planner is being able to see things from an unbiased perspective. And you bring up some absolutely, you, you hit it on the nail on the dot. It was quite poignant where, yes, we can, we can, we can go out there and say, yeah, this is the process. This is how we do this, and this is how we do that. And in addition to that, you know, there's the political variables, there's financial variables, there's, there's act of God variables, and, you know, there's all these other variables that have to be considered. And I've been quite blessed and fortunate to be able to use not just my, my background professionally, but things that I'm also involved in on, 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 on another level that has allowed me to assist individuals. And, you know, be able to, you know, take what is in front of us and understand things objectively and not subjectively. So that, yes, I'm not getting phone calls from Senator's office like, hey, Nate, you said this. What's going on? My job would be to anticipate strategically, you know, what, if we're doing this plan, you know, what are all the scenarios that can, that can, that can occur? And from there, we, we still contain with it the means to accomplish our objectives and our goals. Right? Knowing that I have 20 years in, in, in a financial planning experience, born and raised on Guam, and being involved in politics for 15, 16 years. I mean, Senator, I've known you since you were at the port. And I, I've, I've known Senator Titigui for a very, very long time. Senator Sin Augustine, I, I know, known you for, last time I saw any of them was years ago. But this pandemic has changed the, the landscape of our island and the community. So there's psychological and emotional and financial variables that have to be considered. Now, since Gura clearly is, there's not just the state, we have federal variables that need to be considered. And going back to what I said, you know, speaking completely away from anything political, Mr. Tepasnio actually has done, at least in my opinion, a pretty good job, at least rehabilitating. If we were to put the Republican and Democrat titles to the side, objectively, and not subjectively, but objectively, I believe that Mr. Tepasnio has done a very good job at rehabilitating uh, Gura's PR. And, uh, again, just to reiterate what I mentioned to Senator Titigui, not here to micromanage. We're here to work in concert as a team. And if, if Senator Titigui needed to call upon me, vice versa, Senator Brown, if you needed to contact me, vice versa, the doors are always gonna be open because at the end of the day, it's about the people. And there, there has to be at all times an environment where these people can rely on us because we are in, in essence, public servants, and we need to hold up to that. But so, thank you. I really appreciate that. That was a great question.
Well, thank you as well. Certainly appreciate your insight and the, and your desire to want to extend, uh, your service to the community. I mean, that's, there's always a need and demand for that. I mean, sometimes a lot of people are very busy in their life, but those are sometimes the people you need, uh, to oversee, uh, through policy, how, how these entities run, where you do have these boards and commissions. Because, you know, the gov Guam system is very different. It moves at a different pace. It doesn't always have the objective of producing because, you know, you get paid every couple of weeks. So, you know, you have to worry about it the same way, and, and, and we settle for mediocrity sometimes. And like I said, the desire is always to want to improve and build and, and, and have better service, or how can we do it more effectively, more efficiently, uh, with greater accountability? I think those are all the things the public, at least they seem to reiterate to us, they want to see. And I, I think we very much collectively can concur because the best public interest will be served as a result of that. So certainly look forward to your work on the board, and, and thank you very much for your interest in, in wanting to step up to the plate and serve, and appreciate, uh, the opportunity for you to respond to my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Hey, Merry Christmas. Have a good evening.
Same to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Brown. And Mr. Sanchez, you won't get any call from me. I don't like to call board members unless they, but they do like to call me, and I enjoy that. But, uh,
Senator Sin Augustine, you said we, we can definitely call each other. We're gonna have snacks and drinks. I thought that would-
Of course. Oh, yes. Preferably, uh, a dinner meal or something, you know? Not a political fundraiser, but a dinner meal.
I agree. Absolutely.
But anyway, thank you for your testimony, and thank you, Mr. Tepasnio, and to my colleagues. Um, there's no one else to testify for or against Mr. Sanchez, which is good. Four is better, but none. And, and that, would you like to, uh, provide any closing statement, Mr. Sanchez? I'm me.
I'm using a dispenser. So I'm using a different platform tonight. My, my Zoom on, uh, my, my desktop's been acting up. But Senator Sin Augustine, Senator Tello Titigui, Senator Joanne Brown, I know you could have been doing anything else tonight, and you've taken the time to, to, to hear me out and hear Director Tepasnio out. And for that, I'm grateful, and I'm thankful. Uh, and I will guarantee, at least promise you that I will give you, uh, the best of what I've been able to do, not just for my, my family, but for my, my clients this past 20 years. Again, to reiterate, Senator Sin Augustine, uh, my condolences to your father. I just lost my mother a year and a half. Actually, next, uh, this week will be her second year anniversary. Uh, my mother, Virginia Cantrell, spoke very, very highly of all three of you. And I wish she was here to really, uh, to see this moment. But again, uh, to the Director Tepasnio, Senator Sin Augustine, Senator Brown, Senator Titigui, thank you very much for this evening and the time that you've spent speaking with me. And I hope you have a blessed Christmas and enjoy the rest of your week, and God bless.
Thank you, sir. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
This will conclude the committee's, uh, um, confirmation hearing. Committee will, will receive, continue to receive testimony for the next few days uh, from any individual. Um, and please submit your testimonies to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature or, or, um, through the email at senatorjoessenawstein@gmail.com. And again, I want to thank everyone for attending this virtual public hearing and for, for providing feedback and suggestions. The public hearing is now adjourned for the nomination of Mr. Nathaniel Sanchez. It is now 6:39. And please, um, be safe and Merry Christmas. Thank you. We will now proceed on to the, our next agenda. And that would be for, um, Mr. Mark Anthony Duarte. Sir, Mr. Duarte, are you there? All right. And we have Edith Panglinen. Mr. Duarte, to serve as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors for six years from July 1st, 2021 to June 2026. Um, I'll just repeat the, uh, the rules of conduct. The Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff, and we mute all Zoom participants until called upon. Members of the committee and/or non-committee members will be allowed to pose questions to, to the individual testifying. Individual testifying shall first be recognized by myself before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you're unmuted. Question and testimony should be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive, Senator, or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general conduct will result in removal from the virtual public hearing. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in any other activity during the hearing. Failure to maintain visibility may cause your move from the meeting livestream. Um, but if you, you know, if you need to take a drink or a snack, it's dinnertime or getting off dinner, but that, it'll be, it'll be allowed. I will now begin with, uh, Mr. Duarte. If you can provide us, uh, an opening testimony for your confirmation. Sir?
Thank you, and good evening. Um, half a day, Chairman Sin Augustine, um, Senator Tello Titigui, Senator Brown. Uh, before I proceed, I just, uh, would like to thank Governor Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Tenorio for their confidence in me with this appointment. Um, and of course, Mr. Chairman, uh, for allowing me to speak on my confirmation. Uh, my name is Mark Duarte and, and I'm an appointee to the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors. Uh, this will be my first time serving on a, a board or commission of the Governor of Guam. Of course, should I be confirmed, uh, by this body, and it would be my privilege, uh, to serve, uh, as a member of the Board of Directors. Uh, just some background, um, I was born in the Philippines, moved to Guam in 1980. Been a resident of, uh, Dedodo since, um, for 41 years now. Um, so lived there, live in Guam most of my life. Uh, educated in the Guam Public School System. I graduated from JFK High School in 1991. And then I attended UOG, got my bachelor's degree in political science in 1991, or 1995, excuse me. And then I, uh, returned to UOG again, uh, um, several years later uh, to earn my, uh, my master's in, uh, public administration in, in 2001. I have worked, uh, in, in the private sector, um, and also at the, in the Guam Legislature as a, a policy analyst, uh, mostly working with, uh, committee in, uh, education. And then in, uh, 2010, uh, I became a Director of Financial Aid at the University of Guam, a position that I continue to, uh, hold to this day. Um, while I do not have extensive experience in, in housing, I do have experience with policy analysis and review. And I also understand, uh, the importance of Guam Housing Corporation and why it was established. Um, that is really to promote the general welfare of the people of Guam through the, uh, improvement of housing standards, housing supply, and housing affordability. You know, I've, I've seen, um, many articles and, uh, know a lot of people who really is striving to, um, to be, uh, first-time homeowners. And, uh, for most of them, that's becoming, uh, a lot harder to do, uh, every year. I do, uh, you know, I am, uh, really a believer that, um, everyone in Guam, every resident should have a chance of obtaining housing for themselves and their families, uh, that is both, uh, safe and, and affordable. Um, without a secure and safe housing, uh, people will, will not really have that requisite foundation to build resilient and strong, uh, family units. So I think this is really very important that we, um, give them all the opportunities to, to, uh, secure, uh, housing. Uh, as a member of the Board of the Guam Housing Corporation, of course, I will always strive to act in the best interest of the people of Guam and always within the laws of Guam. Uh, again, thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to serving, uh, to the best of my ability should the, uh, be, I, should I be confirmed by, uh, Ellis, Ellis Letourne, uh, Guam. Uh, seduce Massey, and, uh, thank you very much. Um, that's, uh, really just my short statement, uh, tonight. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Um, Ms. Panglinen, uh, President of the Guam Housing Corporation. Ma'am, your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of your committee. Um, we just met not too long ago down for the presentation of the first-time homeowners. So as Mark had indicated, um, I strongly also, uh, support for his confirmation. We are down to five members of our board, and, uh, with his background in financial, I think that will also help us in ensuring that we need our revenues to sustain our operations, uh, to continue providing the services that we are mandated to ensure that we also, uh, continue to provide loans to those that, uh, will come to us after they are denied, um, their, I guess, uh, from the, from the conventional institution. So we welcome Mr. Duarte to the Board, and we, I look forward to meet, to working with him and our staff and management of the corporation. So I, I look forward for his confirmation from your committee, and I thank you for that tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Edith. Yes, we met today, not too long ago. Um, we have, um, Senator, Senator Tello there. You're back on great. Um, you have any questions for Mark?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, good afternoon, Edith. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And, uh, I think Mark is gonna be a great asset, you know, um, to the Board at Guam Housing. Um, so Mark, welcome. You know, this is your first time sitting on a board. Uh, you definitely know, first time, right? I mean, you, you definitely know how, uh, to set up confirmation hearings left and right. So this should be, uh, easy for you. However, you know, I'm pretty sure what the kind of work that you're gonna do is, uh, it's gonna be taxing, and, and, uh, I think you have that ability from what you do at the University of Guam. Um, do you think you're gonna be able to make all these meetings? Um, I know you're a very busy person.
I, I've attended the, the last few meetings, um, uh, through Zoom. Um, I've seen their, I've reviewed their minutes, uh, and, you know, it's not as, uh, as cumbersome as I thought it would be. I, I looked at the minutes, um, you know, uh, met the, the other members of the, uh, the Board. Just like something that I could handle.
Well, uh, definitely the kind of job that you do at the University of Guam, dealing with a lot of federal funding. Um, so what is your record in maintaining compliance in, um, you know, federal aid and, and the process? And that you're doing there, how are you gonna incorporate it at Guam Housing?
Well, you know, in the, the 10 years that I've, uh, been a Director for Financial Aid, uh, our audits have been clean. Um, we've had, um, some program, uh, reviews from USDOE, and it's always been, uh, um, with flying colors. So, uh, and, um, the monies that we've, uh, received for, for student financial aid, um, from the federal government has, uh, been awarded, um, you know, within the guidelines of, of the law. So, uh, nothing negative, uh, so far, hopefully. And, um, uh, we make sure that we follow all, all the rules and regulations. Uh, as you know, with federal, uh, regulations, even with the, uh, ever-changing, uh, rules, um, we do have to keep up and, uh, make sure that when we dispense the, the millions of dollars that, that we do get, that we do it, uh, um, within the regulations by defense. And I'll continue to do that, of course, with, with this, uh, this organization as well.
Well, congratulations on that. That is a great audit report. Um, and, uh, I greatly appreciate you wanting to step up to the plate after so many years and watching everybody else become board members in your line of work. Uh, it's, it's your turn to give back, and I greatly appreciate that you're doing it. And plus, bringing that institutional knowledge, especially on finances and dealing with, uh, the process and compliance from the federal side. It's very important, and it's gonna help serve this, uh, this Board. They're gonna take advantage of picking your brain to make sure everything's, the Ts are crossed and the I, the, the I's are dotted. So, uh, thank you so much again, and I wish you the very best. And I, as always, Mark, my door is open and, uh, conversation for, uh, getting more scholarships for students. We need to work on that, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tello. Senator Brown, do you have any question for Mr. Duarte?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Certainly appreciate, uh, Mr. Duarte volunteering to step up to the plate. But I did want to ask him in terms of his, his role, uh, you know, to be, once he's confirmed to the Board, uh, where would he like to take, uh, the operations of the Guam Housing Corporation? Because certainly it's been around for a number of years, but it's also competing with other financial institutions. Normally, it's, it's there to assist those that have had difficulty being able to get, uh, conventional loans. Uh, but, you know, in terms of the, the role of, of Guam Housing Corporation, you know, is it functioning up to the level that we'd like to see it or that he would like to see it? Or are there, there improvements that he would like to make? I know he's yet to serve, but I appreciate- I know he's yet to serve, but I appreciate the fact that he's taken the the interest to want to sit in on some board meetings and look at board minutes to get a clearer idea, a clearer picture of what work will be involved in his service. But always, I think for whatever it is we do, we want to improve things for the time that we're there, take it to the next level. So I certainly wanted to hear from Mr. Doherty what his plans are with regards to that, with regards to Guam Housing.
Thank you, Senator, for that question. I think one of the things that that I want to do is encourage more automation in the Guam Housing Corporation. I know that what I've seen is application processes, for example, that may be too, that might be too cumbersome for some of the applicants. I think streamlining those applications might help with the process. They have a pretty good website, I've seen it. But I think making more, making a lot more of their processes automated, I think is a start. I know that the Guam Housing Corporation doesn't really have that much funds to to lend out to our people. But I think over time, you know, as the, as they can generate more, I guess, if they can streamline their processes and we can get more funds into the Guam Housing Corporation, then we can in turn provide more loans to applicants. But I think automation, I think is would be the first step. Some of the, I saw in one of the meetings, concerns about maintenance of some of the units. I think that needs to be looked at as well. I think that's going to be a big thing. I know there was some conversation about ladder estates. And I think that that's something also that needs to be reviewed and to make sure that manage, it's managed properly and that more for, I think more, the island resident needs to be needs to learn about the mission of Guam Housing Corporation. I think it's it's one of those institutions in Guam that that really are, most people in Guam don't know about. And I think we need to advertise the fact that Guam Housing Corporation does exist and can help first-time homeowners.
Well, certainly appreciate your response to my question. We look forward to your contributions and hopefully, like I said, the hope is always to improve and see what, where you can take things to the next level to improve on the operations of Guam Housing. And certainly, it's needed and continued outreach to the community. As you mentioned, a lot of people might not know unless they actually have come and approached Guam Housing for a loan. May not be as familiar, but hopefully with your participation and leadership on the board, that's something you can work with your managers there to help facilitate, to get greater awareness out in the community on the type of programs that Guam Housing can provide. And also just to contribute to the viability and the long-term survivability of the Guam Housing Corporation. Because goodness, nowadays, you don't even need to leave your house, you can apply for a loan. You know, and hopefully, if they, you know, they have the financial means in order, people are also able to get get loans. So it's just a question of how can Guam Housing continue to be viable and have a continued role in our community for those that perhaps otherwise, as we mentioned, might not be able to get a loan for their home through the conventional banks and loan savings and loan businesses that are out there. So thank you very much, Mr. Doherty. Again, we appreciate members of our community who who are willing to step up to the plate and provide their contribution and their time to help serve and also set the policy direction and oversee the operations of such critical agencies that serve our community. So thank you very much and happy holidays to you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to ask these questions.
All right, thank you, thank you, Senator Brown. And Mr. Doherty, do you have anything in closing you'd like to advise us or inform us? And I look, I look forward to supporting your nomination.
Mark. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just just to say Merry Christmas. I'm actually Zooming from from the Philippines. I just got out of quarantine. I haven't seen my wife and first it in two years. So it's good to actually be here. But thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony, even if it's just online. And thank you very much. I've known all of you, of course, from from the other side as a staff member. And then, of course, at the university, when I testified on on the scholarships budget and now as an appointee. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
All right, Merry Christmas, Mark, and please be safe.
Thank you.
There is, there's no one else to testify at this public hearing. And the committee will continue to receive testimony for the next few days. And please submit your testimony to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature or through email at senatorjoessenagustin@gmail.com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending this virtual public hearing and for for providing feedback and suggestion. The public hearing for Mr. Doherty's confirmation hearing is now adjourned. It is now six fifty-seven. And and Sisus Massey. Mark, please stay safe and we'll see you when you get back to Guam. Merry Christmas to you all.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Merry Christmas.
We'll just take a couple of minutes recess and then we'll get ready for our next hearing, which is is on Bill two one one dash thirty-six, just a five minutes, a real short recess. Or as a matter of fact, I think we're pretty much ready. I think it's the same folks that's going to be here anyway. There's only Senator Telo, Senator Brown. So why don't we go ahead and just begin? All right, so. Let me just get. It is now six fifty-eight. The Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation and Housing is now called back to order. Today is Monday, December, December thirteen, twenty twenty-one. The time now is six fifty-eight. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom, those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you, thank you for your patience and for coming to Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Notice for this public hearing, we're disseminating the email to all centers and all main media broadcasting hours on Wednesday, December twenty-four, twenty twenty-one, and Thursday, December nine, twenty twenty-one. And the following items will be heard for this evening's public hearing would be Bill two one one dash thirty-six CR. Introduced by myself, an act amend section five one oh three, C three F of Article One, Chapter Five, Division One, Title Twelve Guam Code annotated relative to increasing the compensation of the Board of Commissioners of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority. General rules for this public hearing, the Zoom is, Zoom meeting is hosted by myself and will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by myself. Members of the committee or non-committee members will be allowed to pose questions to an individual testifying. Those, those testifying shall first be recognized by myself before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Question and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the general personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any bodies of the general rule of conduct will result and remove from the virtual public hearing. Please ensure your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in any activity during the hearing. Better to maintain visibility may cause your move from the meeting livestream. But if you're having a drink or having a snack, it's, we're close to dinner, right, Senator Brown? We need to be able to still be able to have a drink. But, you know, I'm going to give an opening statement on Bill two eleven dash thirty-six CR, which is an act amend the sections identified earlier. Our island is equipped with talented and knowledgeable individuals who take the time to serve our people by accepting the response with the of board members of different government agencies, Board of Commissioners and/or Directors despite of their busy lives. Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority, also known as GURA, has become home to hard-working board members that understand the importance of GURA and its mission to the people of Guam. This bill allows GURA Board of Commissioners compensation to increase from fifty dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars for attending a board meeting or commission, commission meeting. Such compensation shall not exceed five hundred dollars per month. GURA is fairly funded, which their board members' compensation is fully funded by the federal government and will not impact the government of Guam. I remind you, it's fairly funded and it will not impact the government of Guam. And it doesn't threaten any of the grants that are out there to provide housing assistance. I'd like to thank the board members of GURA and all the government of Guam board members for stepping up and providing their service to the people of Guam. I look forward to hearing the testimony in today's hearing and appreciate your participation. Sisus Massey, and we have the the Director of GURA, Mr. Tapazna. If you'd like to provide some testimony and hopefully in support of the bill, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Honorable Joe Sinagustin, and as well to Honorable Senators Tai Tegui and Honorable Senator Joanne Brown. For the record, my name is Ray Sanchez Tapazna, and I currently serve as the Executive Director of GURA. I want to thank you, Senator Sinagustin, for introducing Bill two eleven dash thirty-six, which is way overdue. I am in full support of this bill because the liabilities of serving on a governing board of a more than hundred million dollar operation needs to be commensurate with the compensation. Yes, the GURA Board is in fact a governing board by federal statute. In short, what that means is the board is chiefly responsible for the entire operations of the housing authority. However, we cannot have seven directors report to work daily and make all the decisions. So they instead must appoint an executive team whom they trust to run the daily operations. Both the board and executive management are held to account by our federal partners. GURA is unique in a sense that is, it is the only housing authority in the entire nation that oversees all funded, all HUD-funded programs under one roof. Ideally, a housing authority in the in the US would handle, say, the Section Eight program. Another would oversee public housing. A third would manage the community development block grant, home ESG and other grants. The state would handle the low-income housing tax credit programs. We trust that our Board of Commissioners at some point should have a decent understanding of all of these programs in order to make prudent decisions in the best interest of thousands of women and the US taxpayer. From the onset of our administration, it hasn't been easy to convince most folks to serve on the GURA Board. My team and I have worked hard to turn our image around over the last three years. And it is my belief that the time has come to pay our Board of Commissioners a fair stipend for assuming such responsibility and having to learn a diverse number of programs in order to exercise their fiduciary responsibility. I humbly request passage of Bill two eleven dash thirty-six in order to ensure fair compensation for such a high level of responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Senator Telo or I'll start with Senator Brown because she's not on. She's probably taking care of something while she's listening. Senator Brown, please.
Well, I certainly appreciate the testimony, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure yet how I'm going to proceed with regards to voting with, you know, this particular bill. I mean, I understand the service of the community members. Certainly, we just had one this evening, Mr. Sanchez, who stepped forward to want to serve on the board. You know, I do understand, as you mentioned, this is federal funds. But I also want to look across the board at how this creates an equity with other boards. And it's also a question of timing. You know, as I've mentioned time and time again, Mr. Chair, at your, at your hearings, especially when we were dealing with a budget earlier this year, you know, things are unpredictable right now with regards to where our economy is going and what are the issues that we're going to be challenged with financially in the next year ahead. You know, so certainly I will look at this, but I, for me, it's a question of timing. And then also there are other critical operations of the government of Guam where boards and commission members sit on those boards and certainly would not be receiving anywhere near two hundred and fifty dollars per meeting. You know, most meetings maybe last an hour, a couple of hours. You're talking on average about maybe a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour on average for a board member to sit on the board. And pretty much sitting on the board was always looked at as more a community service. So I certainly appreciate you putting it forward. But again, I just reserve my thoughts right now as to whether or not I will support this bill. But thank you for the opportunity to listen to the testimony provided by Mr. Tapazna and certainly your, your explanation and your initiative and wanting to introduce this bill.
Thank you, Senator Telo. Do you have any questions in reference to the the bill?
Yeah, I just was wondering if there, I heard something about the federal government. Do you know on on other?
It's fairly funded by the federal government, Senator.
Okay, do, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. But my question would be, do you know of other jurisdictions in the US that that give that type of stipend? I mean, this is almost a four hundred percent increase, over a four hundred percent increase from fifty to two hundred and fifty. That's a huge jump, you know? And if you go a little bit gradually at a time, it might make more sense than just bam, you know, four hundred, over four hundred percent increase. So my question again would be, are other, are you familiar, Mr. Director, with other jurisdictions in the mainland that that give this type of stipend?
You know, it varies. Thank you for the question, Senator Tai Tegui. It varies primarily, as I mentioned earlier. It's hard to compare apples to oranges simply because if I were to compare GURA to any other housing authority, there isn't a single one that oversees public housing, Section Eight and all of that stuff. So the answer to your question is, do they get paid more than the GURA Board? Absolutely, but it, it'd be difficult to to make a comparison because we're very unique in that sense. But having said that, the liabilities are far greater than sitting on a housing authority anywhere in the US. And by federal statute, they're governing boards. And when I say that, I mean, there's liabilities on the public housing side on Section Eight. And Section Eight alone is about thirty-eight million dollar operation. So, you know, it's been a challenge every time we request for somebody to sit on the, on the GURA Board compared to the likes of the Port Authority and the airport where there are perks. There are no perks for the GURA Board. There's zero travel. It's kind of ironic that there's no travel attached to sitting on or assuming a board position when we deal with the federal government more often than anybody else because we're fully funded by the federal government. Yet our travel is zeroed out and we, our communication with the federal government is is like we have today via Zoom. So that was my intention from day one, three years ago. We would, we would be very prudent in our, in our decision-making and therefore travel is not a priority for us, whether it's there's a pandemic or not. So, yeah, it's hard to compare, but I'm given the level of the the level of responsibility and, you know, let's just call a spade a spade. Everybody knows what happens if you sit on the GURA Board and you're stepping out of line. I mean, things, things that our board, our previous board was held to account happens in other places and there's no accountability. We just had a federal case with a verdict that came down for an attorney of GURA. I mean, you can't be an attorney of GURA and step out of line either, but. So we're held to account, we're highly regulated. And and the whole purpose of increasing, or I can't speak for our Oversight Chair, but my support of this bill is primarily, there's a lot of liability and it's hard to entice anyone to sit on the GURA Board, given the fact that there's zero perks. And you know, it's all about gratification. It's all about our ribbon-cutting events, our groundbreaking events. And but you need to exercise your fiduciary role. So you need to understand what the programs are about and compare it to most entities. We, there's a lot to learn sitting on the GURA Board. And you don't want to be making decisions as a governing board without knowing what you're doing. So I guess.
Thank you for, yeah, that was a long explanation. Yes, I hear you. But you know, there are other boards that do just as much as work. If not, some meet twice, like for instance, the ABC Board. I mean, they have to meet twice a month and review documents. And, you know, they, they always have a quorum, you know? And so I know it, you know, what you're saying, but you know, entice. so I know it, you know, what you're saying, but, you know, enticing individuals to come sit on the board for a stipend of two hundred and fifty? I don't think that's the reason why we want people to come and sit on boards. You know, they're serving the people of Guam. They're doing their part in the community. You shouldn't have to be enticing them by, you know, offering them more money to do so. I mean, it's a job that takes a lot of integrity integrity and ethics. And I just, you know, having a hard time with this this bill myself, you know, and then justification is, I don't think it's justifiable because we can't get enough people to serve on the board. There are a lot of boards out there that have a lot more work than this board. So I appreciate your comments, but, you know, like myself, I'm I will look more into this. But I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chair, and I know what you're built, and let's talk about this. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Tello. We'll provide you additional information, but being that we have nobody else to testify, I'll just do my closing and I will provide Senator Brown and Senator Tai Tegui because it's been my job now to convince the two of you and then everybody else hopefully would would join. Thank you, my colleagues, for your presence today. And Mrs. Tapazna, thank you. For me, this bill property compensates the board members of the GURA as they continue to promote the health, safety and welfare of our people by improving our island community through orderly redevelopment and renewal of communities. GURA, through the help of their board members, have diligently provided service to our people and our island through many programs such as Section Eight, public housing, Guam. You might want to get it up. Again, GURA is fairly funded. An increase in the compensation for GURA Board of Commissioners does not affect the government of Guam. It's fairly funded. It doesn't impact the grants they 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 obtain. And I will, I will provide the additional information provided to my colleagues where other boards exist. And like was mentioned, we can't compare apples on because most states don't have the same composition as we have on Guam. We're one of the unique, I guess, I won't say country, but territory or state. But with that, we'll just continue to receive testimony in reference to this bill. And then we'll just move forward, but I will provide additional information to my colleagues to to build the the support. All right, the committee will receive testimony, will continue to receive testimony. Please submit your testimony to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature or through email at senatorjoessenagustin@gmail.com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending this virtual public hearing and for and for providing feedback and suggestion. The public hearing is now adjourned. It is now seven fourteen P.M. And Sisus Massey, and that ends the evening of hearing. Thank you, my colleagues, for joining. All right. Take care. Thank you, Mr. Ray. All right, folks. Please be safe.